Good morning. My name is Donald Godfrey. I'm the university chaplain at the University of San Francisco, and I'm a friend of Matt Dorsey.
Yay!
Yay, yay, yes. Yes. And I'm giving the benediction this morning. Let us pray. As we come together from many differing faith traditions and beliefs, we all join in asking for this blessing for Matt Dorsey as he takes on the important role as supervisor for District 6 for the city of San Francisco. We also are asking for blessings on Mayor London Breed and all of our civic leaders of every political persuasion. In this important public service, Matt, may you and all of our civic leaders be inspired by the example of our city's patron Francis de Vercisi, who was a radical leader for peace, economic and social justice, for a common home, the earth. Matt, may you have the grace and wisdom to act kindly, learning to distinguish between what is personal and what is not. May you be hospitable to criticism. May you never put yourself at the center of things. May you act not from arrogance but out of service to create a more just and humane world and for the common good. May you learn to cultivate the art of presence in order to engage with those who meet you. When someone fails or disappoints you, may the graciousness with which you engage be the stairway to renewal and refinement. May you treasure the gifts of the mind through reading and open heart and creative thinking. May you be a civil leader on the frontier, most especially for the marginal, for those without your privilege in District 6 and the city. And may you never become a functionary. May you know the wisdom of deep listening, the healing of wholesome words, the decorum of held dignity, the springtime edge of the bleak question. May you have a mind that loves frontiers so that you can evoke the bright feels that lie beyond the view of the regular eye. May you have good friends to mirror your blind spots. May leadership be for you a true adventure of service and growth. Amen.
Let the church say amen! Thank you, Father, for your prayers and just really opening up this occasion to such hope, to such light and such excitement for not only the future of this district but the future of this city. I am London Breed Mayor of the City and County of San Francisco, and I will tell you that I am so grateful to be here at this time and very happy and excited for the ability to appoint such an extraordinary human being. This process has been very difficult, and in having conversations with numerous people who actually live in this district, I heard some tremendous feedback about the challenges that exist. I want to start by thanking Mimi Silbert and Delancey Street. Mimi is an icon in the recovery world, and I can think of off the top of my head 10 people who I grew up with who were so fortunate enough to turn their lives around because of Delancey Street and the work that they have done and continue to do. It's so fitting that we're here to announce the District 6 Supervisor at Delancey Street because Matt Dorsey represents what recovery can be when we provide the right opportunities for people who are struggling. He represents what hope is, hope for a new future, hope for transformation, but more importantly, in knowing Matt for so many years, what I appreciate is his willingness to build bridges, to work together, to make the hard decisions, and to focus on the work that's important to San Franciscans. And in fact, he led on many efforts, working for our former city attorney, Dennis Herrera, around the historic decision that happened for marriage equality in this city and in this country. We should be so proud of not just Dennis but the work that Matt did when he worked in his office. The challenges that have existed with San Francisco being really the epic center of the HIV/AIDS epidemic, and in fact, Matt Dorsey and his work around getting to zero has led to extraordinary gains in San Francisco, seeing record-low numbers like never before of new infections of HIV in San Francisco. He's led the way on focusing on efforts, yes, that are important to the LGBTQ community, but also what has been important to him is recovery, safety, and the ability for people to live in a community where they feel safe and secure. And his work with our chief Bill Scott at the San Francisco Police Department has been It's been clear that it's important to have reforms, to push for reforms, to transform our police department, but also equally important is to make sure that we have officers that represent the community and that are a part of the fabric of the community and that are here to serve and protect us. But those are not the only issues that Matt Dorsey cares about and is focused on. Many of the issues around workers' rights and tenants' rights are things that he has been unwavering in in supporting communities. As I said, this was a hard decision. There were so many extraordinary candidates, and I really want to thank all the candidates who participate in this process and put their name forward. It takes a lot of courage to be a part of a process like this, and we have some extraordinary people who I know are going to be committed to serving District 6 in any way possible. And thank you so much, Vikram, for being here today to support Matt Dorsey. And I really want to say thank you to so many of the people that I reached out to who actually live in District 6. I'm gonna be honest, those people were somewhat hard to find. So in reaching out to people like Bruce Aggett and others, I was able to get to people throughout the entire district and talking to friends and people I grew up with who live in Mission Bay and some of the new properties that we've been able to develop, some of the new places where fortunately residents who were born and raised in San Francisco now live, having those kinds of conversations. And what I heard time and time again and why I felt it was necessary to appoint Matt Dorsey to this position, every single person I talked to, for the most part, at the top of their mind was public safety. At the top of their mind were people who I grew up with in public housing in some instances who said, "I'm not comfortable with going out at night in my neighborhood." That struck me as just really devastating and frustrating. It means that public safety has to be at the top of mind. Helping people through the challenges of their life are important, but also making sure that people feel safe in their neighborhoods and their communities. And we are so grateful that folks from United Players are here, as well as Somapilipinas and other organizations, West Bay. Thank you, Carla, for being here from West Bay and others, because we know you all work time in and day in and day out in the Soman neighborhood to help bring people together and keep our community safe. We have a diverse group of people representing all parts of the district, all parts of the various communities, because I know either you have a relationship with Matt or you've heard about Matt or in some way you came here because you wanted to make sure you knew who you learned about who Matt is. And before we take a moment to swear Matt in, I wanted an opportunity for the people who know him best, the people who he worked for, but also members of the community, to tell you just a little bit about their experiences of who Matt Dorsey is, what he will represent for the district, and how he will be responsive to the needs of what is now the new District 6 of the City and County of San Francisco, starting with our city attorney, Dennis Herrera. Okay, the man was district city attorney forever, so... David Chu is the new city attorney, we all know. Dennis Herrera is the former city attorney, I keep forgetting, but he's now the director of the Public Utilities Commission for San Francisco, Dennis Herrera.
Well, first of all, as general manager of the Public Utilities Commission. Now, don't get mad at me now, David, I'm not coming back. But, Madam Mayor, you could not have made a better selection than Matt Dorsey for District 6 Supervisor. Unfortunately, it's true, I was around for 20 years, it's a long time, but let me tell you, Matt Dorsey stood by my side for 14 of those years as a spokesperson for the City Attorney's Office. Matthew Bajeko asked me a little bit earlier, he said, "So how does this feel to have Matt Dorsey being sworn in as supervisor?" I said, "You know what? People have been benefiting from Matt Dorsey's service for close to 20 years, and they just didn't know it." We have a tremendous family in the City Attorney's Office, as City Attorney David Chu can attest to, but we all worked together, and it was never just about the lawyers in the City Attorney's Office. The mayor alluded to the battle for marriage equality. Well, I don't care if it was marriage equality, fighting for healthy San Francisco, fighting on issues of sanctuary city, or working on a myriad of public safety issues that we pioneered in the City Attorney's Office to keep these the streets safe. Matt Dorsey was there. He was a strategist, a confidant, a colleague, understanding how to focus on issues and to hear what was in the minds of the public that we all represent. And the public has benefited from his wisdom for 20 years to help make the San Francisco City Attorney's Office the premier municipal law office in the country. And they owe Matt Dorsey a tremendous debt of gratitude. And the mayor, obviously, through her infinite wisdom, divined that as well, from the people that she talked to and in terms of her interactions with Matt, because he can be kind of persuasive. Those of us that know best, no, because he pushed me to be a better person, a better public servant, a better leader, a more responsive one. And before I close and hand it over to my good friend Chief Scott, I just want to say two things, three things, actually. One, Matt has an incredible ego about two things, two things. Number one, his clothes. Well, you're gonna get a pay cut, so no more clothes horsing, okay? You're gonna be out there walking on the streets. And number two, he is the first to admit there is no better writer in San Francisco government than Matt Dorsey, and he does not take kindly to people giving him suggestions. Well, now you're gonna be working with staff in your office, and you're gonna have to learn to rely on what they write instead of editing ad infinitum about what they put before you. And finally, and just as importantly, we know we have a little bit, there's been a little controversy about district lines and everything like that. Well, you should really thank that they did not put dog patch in District 6, because then you'd have me as a constituent, and I'd be making your life miserable as my district supervisor. So Matt, I am so proud of you. You have been a tremendous colleague and friend, and I benefited from his service for 14 years, but I wasn't the only one. The San Francisco Police Department benefited from his service as well. So with that, Chief Bill Scott.
Good morning, good morning. And so first of all, let me thank Mayor Breed for making what I believe to be an outstanding selection, but I'm a little ticked because we're losing such a great guy. You know, I have worked with Matt for the last two years, and you can probably multiply that. We say policing is in dog years, and this last two years has been as crazy as any two years in my almost 33-year policing career. But what has made it special is the people that we have gone through this two-year journey with, and leading that pack is Matt Dorsey. I can't tell you how many times, the late-night conversations, the strategy sessions, and two things I will say about Matt Dorsey, that he always puts the city first. We have this saying, anytime Matt comes to me and says, "I need you to do this interview, I need you to get out and do this public appearance," and the question that we always look at each other and say, "How is this gonna help the city?" And he always puts the city first. And as Dennis has said, you know, almost two decades of public service, he is a public servant. In terms of his work with the police department over the last two years, it didn't take very long when I sat down with Matt and we were trying to decide who we were gonna make our director of strategic communications, which is a command staff position. It didn't take very long. His reputation preceded him. I talked to quite a few people, because I didn't know him, had never met him before, and we sat down in Starbucks, and he was just a real person with real stories, with lived experiences, and those experiences makes him who he is. He's a caring person, he's a compassionate person, he's an honest person, and he stands his ground when he believes in an issue. Whichever way he believes in an issue, he's gonna stand his ground. And I can't tell you, Matt, you know how much I appreciate you and your work and you as a person. We're gonna miss you. In the San Francisco Police Department, we're gonna miss you dearly, but we know that the next chapter of your purpose, public service career, that the city is in good hands. So whatever we can do to make your transition easier, I wish we had a little bit more time, but I don't think we have a choice on that, but whatever we can do to make your transition easier and to work with you in your new capacity as a member of the Board of Supervisors, we will do that, and we know that you will hold us accountable, like you will hold everybody else accountable, because that's who you are, and we welcome that, and we definitely welcome you into this new role in the Board of Supervisors. So I just want to end by saying, thank you for being you. We appreciate you.
Well, you've heard from two now former bosses of Matt Dorsey, and now it's time to hear from his almost, a few of his almost 80,000 new bosses in District 6. But before I call up the first person to speak, I want to thank and acknowledge members of the Board of Supervisors who will be Matt's new colleagues, including Supervisor Catherine Stephanie, Supervisor Raphael Mandelman. I see the president of the Board of Supervisors, Shimon Walton, is here, and I think Supervisor Asha Safai is here as well. Thank you all so much for joining us here today. Oh, thank you. And we have Supervisor Gordon Marr who's here. Thank you so much, Supervisor. Is that like a quorum now? Anyway, so here to speak from the resident side of things, your future bosses, I mean, you have like really almost 80,000 people that you have to be responsive to rather than just one or two here and there. And to lead that pack, I want to introduce Gloria Lee. She's a resident of Trans Bay, and so she's gonna be saying a few words. Gloria.
Thank you, Mayor, and as residents, I do want to invite a few of my neighbors to come up with me. They are my troublemaker neighbors. So please, Seema, Lee, Chris, just a few of the D6 residents that hopefully will help make our neighborhood a little better. So hi, everyone. Good afternoon. I'm Gloria Lee. I am the co-founder of IDASF. We are a coalition of residents and businesses in downtown and Barcadero, Trans Bay, Rincon Hill, and East Cut. We are a volunteer group, and we formed this group during the pandemic to create a voice for our high-density community. With me today are my IDASF co-founders, and they have tirelessly worked to improve our neighborhoods throughout the pandemic to create public space and increase public safety. I'm here today because I'm very honored and excited to congratulate our new supervisor, Matt Dorsey, on his appointment to represent our district. Thank you, Mayor London Breed, for hearing our voices and our needs, and thank you for appointing a candidate who has a vision, priorities, and our best interest in mind. As a woman of color and a mother, I have been very selective about who would be the best representative for our home. To the naked eye, D6 and downtown is a metropolis of high-rises and offices, but it is also the area of highest residential housing, BMR, and affordable, as well as a very highly-populated API district with nearly 40% of us being Asians. Supervisor Dorsey understands the struggles and the complexity of our challenges. He has been very open with the community since day one about his policies and his history in local government. San Francisco needs a leader who will listen and engage, but more importantly, address accountability and transparency issues to provide answers and improvement to our community. Supervisor Dorsey has been a champion for people of color since he started working in government, going way back to 1991, where he formed a hate crime task force to establish key policies and procedures for prosecuting hate crimes, which would later be adopted on a state level. He continued this work when he became the Communications Director for SFPD, where he partnered with an API advocacy group, APAPA, to establish a multilingual hate crime tip line for victims and served as a key leader during the Yellow Whistle campaign. Matt is not one to toot his own horn, so I will do that for him. Thank you for being an amazing ally and for stepping up to lead during complicated times. There is a very famous Chinese proverb, "Si sai zhou ying hong." The timing makes the hero. Matt's track record and works speaks to his commitment and passion for the city. Thank you for stepping up for the community. When we need a hero, this is your time. Congratulations and welcome. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much, Gloria, for putting it into perspective, and public safety, of course, is not the only issue that's gonna be at top of mind. I've also heard from residents about things that, of course, mattered. One of the things that came up was congestion, traffic, many of the challenges with some of the games that have made the streets difficult to move around in, and I think Matt's platform around dealing with transportation challenges are gonna be imperative to helping to address some of these issues, as well as housing and housing affordability and access to housing and safety in the communities, as we said before. But also, I heard from a number of small business owners and residents who advocated for small businesses. And so I want to introduce a small business owner in District 6 who has, who owns Ted's Market, one of the, one of my favorites in terms of sandwiches for lunchtime. And so I want to introduce Mariam Zazounis to talk a little bit about small businesses and the work that our supervisor's gonna do to help to support our small businesses. Mariam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and team, and thank you to our new supervisor, Mr. Matt Dorsey. My name is Miriam. I'm vice president of the Small Business Commission for the City and County of San Francisco, but more importantly, my family has a deli corner store in District 6. We are a legacy business. My dad is here, he came straight from Restaurant Depot. And I'm here today to show my support for the supervisor, to represent our District 6 neighborhoods, because I believe he understands that crucial balance of public safety and community retention. And I can't stress this enough, our communities are not going to be sacrificed. We need to ensure that everyone is equally protected, and I believe that our new supervisor has that in mind. As the shutdown orders went into place and a disproportionate impact fell on our immigrant and under-resourced small businesses, my first working experience with Matt was trying to help, was his attempts to clarify and actually his success in helping to clarify some of these orders for our small businesses to make sure that our equity neighborhoods were not cut off from resources. I look forward to continuing this practice of accountability and policymaking in his new role as our District 6 supervisor. Thank you.
And last but not least, I wanted to mention that many of the residents said that they wanted a supervisor who would be there for them, who would be responsive to the challenges that this district faces, and that was one of the most important things in making this election, and I am so excited, honored to swear in the next supervisor of District 6, Matt Dorsey. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Matt Dorsey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith and allegiance.
That I bear true faith, true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental resignation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I serve as.
As I serve as.
Member.
Member.
Of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors.
Of the San Francisco Board of Supervisors.
For the residents of District 6.
For the residents of District 6.
And the County Transportation Authority.
And the County Transportation Authority.
For the City and County of San Francisco.
For the City and County of San Francisco.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
Your new supervisor!
Thank you, Mayor Breed, my fellow board colleagues, General Manager Herrera, Chief Scott, Father Godfrey, Gloria and Miriam, Mimi Silbert, Pacific Treasure, all my former colleagues, all my friends and family members, including my amazing goddaughter, Isa, my amazing partner, Gerson. Thank you all so much for being here. I am honored and humbled by the trust Mayor London Breed has placed in me to serve my city and my District 6 neighbors on the San Francisco Board of Supervisors. As I begin my tenure on the board today, I'll share some things about me with those who don't know me yet. First, I am a believer in what good government can accomplish. I intend to be a full partner with Mayor Breed and my board colleagues in helping govern our city responsibly, effectively, and accountably. Second, I won't shrink from debates that matter, but I won't waste much time with debates that don't. I will always welcome skepticism, but I have little use for cynicism. I'll embrace what's healthy for good government, and I will resist what's toxic to it. Thank you. Another thing to know about me is I am a three-time drug rehab graduate, and although I've spent most of my adult life in recovery, I've had setbacks. That's why I feel personally invested in reversing the record-shattering crisis and drug overdose deaths we have seen in San Francisco since 2020, and it's largely why, thank you. And it's largely why I asked Mayor Breed to consider me for this appointment. Now, I know I am luckier than most others. I had had the blessings of good health insurance, access to rehab programs too many others don't have. I've also been blessed with friends and family members, sponsors and sponsees, employers and colleagues, many of them here today, who refused to give up on me even in my darkest hours, even when I doubted whether I had another recovery in me. I understand from lived experience the seemingly unconquerable challenges facing those of us who grapple with addiction and alcoholism in my district and elsewhere. More than anything else, as I stand here today, I believe in the full promise of recovery. I believe in local government has an essential role in helping fulfill that promise. I want every San Franciscan who struggles with addiction or alcoholism to have the same access to care I had, and to know that they have the support of a city that won't give up on them either. Now, thanks, Ellen. It's appropriate for us to begin this journey here at Delancey Street, hailed as the best and most successful rehabilitation program in the world, under the leadership of Mimi Silbert. It is... ... It is one example, along with Sonny Schwartz, one examples. It gives me hope for what our city can accomplish, but we have our work cut out for us. The staggering loss of life in our city due to drugs today represents a public health calamity San Franciscans haven't seen since the height of the AIDS crisis. And as a gay man living with HIV who remembers those terrifying days, I will tell you that just like AIDS, the stigma of who is dying is masking the horror of how many are dying. Since the advent of COVID-19, San Francisco's street drug trade has surpassed the pandemic's lethality nearly twice over. Over the last two years, serving on the SFPD command staff under the leadership of Chief Bill Scott, it is the number one issue I have worked on, together with all of the associated ills related to it. Issues that disproportionately affect District Six, like open-air drug scenes, brazen drug dealing, drug-related crime and violence, including homicides. And while addicts and crime victims are most directly affected, we can't forget the toll this takes on our communities every day, on neighbors and families with children, on seniors and small businesses, as Miriam talked about. Now, those of you who know me, including some who've worked with me for more than 30 years, you know I'll never be a one-issue supervisor or a one-issue candidate, but I am absolutely convinced of this. If we could prioritize one issue to make real progress on, getting more people with drug addiction into drug treatment and into recovery would make progress on a real, an array of related problems, from retail theft and burglar, auto burglaries and homelessness, street conditions, public, public safety and more, much more in fact, because it would also save lives. Over the last two years, I've had the honor of working with Chief Scott, as he's led the San Francisco Police Department through the most ambitious set of 21st century policing reforms in the nation. I think our city and its police department have a lot to be proud of for the national model it's becoming, but we have a lot of safety, public safety challenges too, and I'll be working to help solve them. One of those is our police staffing crisis and a police force that is 25% below our recommended staffing level, yet like so many of the challenges facing our city, our lack of affordable housing is frustrating hopes for progress on that. As the newly-appointed supervisor to a newly redrawn District Six, I think I am uniquely empowered by the residents I now represent to be more than just a reliable vote for board, for, for a board vote for housing. I intend to be a forceful advocate for the promise of authentically progressive urbanism that my district embodies. I'll be a full partner with Mayor Breed and allied board colleagues, state and local leaders and advocates to accomplish the ambitiously pro-housing agenda our city needs. That means taking seriously our shared responsibility to solve our converging crises of affordability and equity, displacement by building more housing at all-income levels in every San Francisco neighborhood. It means ending cynical abuses of local control and environmental review that have too often stymied rather than shaped needed progress toward more housing in our city. It means rising to the challenge of related moral imperatives like climate change, homelessness and addiction, which demand ambitious and creative approaches to housing, including safe shelter, sober living environments, supportive services and more. It means pursuing housing goals in ways that best serve lower and middle-income San Franciscans, not just with new housing they can afford, but also with opportunities for skilled construction jobs with good wages and benefits to build it. It means fighting for the myriad priorities that make progressive urbanism so attractive in the first place, like public transit, bike lanes and bike share, cultural diversity and nightlife, and a high-quality public realm. And it means fighting transfer, transportation improvements that mitigate traffic congestion like Mayor Breed discussed, and dangerous intersections to make our neighborhood safe and inviting to residents and visitors. Nearly 20 years ago, I joined the executive staff of a then newly-elected city attorney, Dennis Herrera. I spent 14 years working in that award-winning office that he led, which has produced leaders like Vice President Kamala Harris, Attorney General Rob Bonta, State Senator Scott Weiner, at least a half dozen state and federal judges, and accomplished public servants at every level. I am proud to share their public service lineage, and it's my intention as District Six Supervisor to emulate the principled courage they've all shown on so many issues. We have many challenges right now as a city. As we continue our recovery from a global pandemic, I know our problems may seem intractable, solutions impossible. I'm convinced there are neither, and I'm optimistic about changes to come. Thanks to Father Donald Godfrey from USF, we began this program with a Catholic theme, and I'm gonna close with one that quotes from, again, from our city's patron saint, Saint Francis of Assisi. "I think it should be our guide to our approach on addiction, on public safety, on affordable housing, on traffic congestion, and on so much more. Start by doing what is necessary, Saint Francis said, then what is possible, and suddenly you are doing the impossible." Thanks so much, everybody, let's get to work. Thanks, Eric.